We will be up to see, please keep all cell phones off or on vibration, please remain standing for prayer and worship of God. I call the Warren County Commission meeting order, and before I turn it over to Mr. Fisher Ross, Commissioner Philip Stout had an accident on the ladder on Wednesday and broke seven ribs, so please pray for his speedy recovery. I'll now turn it over to Mr. Fisher Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight we have Matthew Johansson to lead us in prayer. He is the youth minister at Urban College Baptist Church and an ordained minister, so we'll turn it over to him.
If you would join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, we thank you for the many blessings and freedoms you give us each and every day, Lord. Tonight we lift up those that are less fortunate than us, Lord, that are piecing their lives back together, trying to overcome the various terrible things that have happened in our country in the last recent times here, whether it be the hurricanes or the fires, Lord, just be with them, Lord. Give them strength, Lord, and send them help that they desperately need, Lord. At this time, Lord, I lift up the leadership that is represented here tonight, Lord, and ask for your guidance and your blessings upon them, Lord. In the spirit of unity, Lord, let us pull together, Lord, and support one another, Lord, and look out for the best interests of our community, Lord. Bless this meeting, Lord, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Next, we have Specialist Marcus Colton Miller. Cole, if you'll come to the front, or as we know him, Cole. Cole is a U.S. Army veteran who served five years active duty as a motor transport operator starting in 2015. During his time in the Army, he was stationed at Joint Base Elmandorf Richardson in Anchorage, Alaska for three years. He deployed with the 109th Transportation Company to Kuwait in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Inherit Resolve. His unit's main task was to transport ammunition and other critical supplies needed on the front lines of the war. However, he spent most of his deployment as part of the Theater Gateway Operation, in which his main task was to discreetly escort soldiers who arrived in Kuwait to secured bases where they would eventually be sent further into Iraq. After his time in Alaska, he would go on to be stationed at Fort Campbell, Kentucky, where he would find himself deployed for a second time to Kuwait with the 101st Airborne Division. This time, he served as team leader and truck commander hauling ammunition nearly every day for nine months. Cole was awarded four Army Achievement Medals and two Army Accommodation Medals during his time in the Army. Cole left the Army in 2019 after fulfilling his second contract to pursue his dreams of construction and having a family. Nowadays, Cole serves Warren County as the Director of Buildings and Environmental Codes and its Fire Marshal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michael Bell?
Here.
Carl Bolden?
Here.
Carleen Brown? Charles Dotson?
Here.
Randy England?
Here.
Steve Glenn?
Here.
Stephen Hilton?
Here.
Brad Hillis?
Here.
James Hines?
Here.
Scott Kelly? Ron Lee?
Here.
Gary Martin?
Here.
Kenny Moffett?
Here.
Cam Montgomery?
Here.
Casey Owens?
Here.
Gary Prater?
Here.
Chris Rippey? Kristy Ross?
Here.
Scott Ruble?
Tommy Savage?
Here.
Donna Smith?
Here.
Philip Stout? Cole Taylor?
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Here.
We have 19 present here tonight. Now we'll move on to the adoption of our document for tonight. Motion for adoption, Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Jackson. Do you have a document to adopt tonight? Any one of us in favor of approving the document, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we've approved our document for tonight. Everyone wish to make public comments and see Mr. Hillis about signing up as we do our reports, and we'll move on to item number six. Read what we want to hear.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the minutes as written and dispose of the reading.
And the motion, Mr. Savage, the second by Mr. Angleton, if there's no additional questions for the minute, all in favor of approving the minute, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll move on to our elected official department report. Harvey is unable to be here tonight, but I'll call Mr. Blaine Wiltshire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everyone should have a copy of the report in your packet, or actually was on your desk. If anyone has any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Motion adopted.
I make a motion adopted.
All in favor of adopting our report, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? I do want to call your attention to how our reports look and how much information we have. Mr. Jeff Todd has done an excellent job down there of trying to fix our rare people problems that we have. We'll move on now to the Health Department. Ms. Fox?
Thank you. Each of you should have my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve. And the motion, Mr. Prater?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hillis. Any questions about the Health Department?
I did get asked a question about when we're going to get into the, with the Health Department, and I forgot the date on that.
I've talked to the architect and they made some changes with Dell the other day, and he said it'll be thanks for it. Set those up for bid, is that what you're saying? Yeah. The deadline is June 2026. Welcome. Any more questions? All in favor of approving the Health Department report, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the IDB, Mr. Anderson.
Evening, Chair and Commission. I believe you all should have our, I'm losing my voice, the activity and financial reports. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer those for y'all.
Motion to approve. And the second by Mr. Lane. Any questions for the IDB comments report?
Yes, sir. So I was going to mention a change. I'd send an agenda of an event, that things that were coming up on our calendar, as well as the communities. One of those, so Wednesday morning at 11:00 a.m., our TCAT McMimble will be having the groundbreaking for their new, their new facility that will be going in. And then that afternoon at 2:00 p.m., Center Bowling and several others from state representatives, I believe, from tourism, economic development, and agriculture will be with us at TSU at the Research Center, 2:00 p.m., to discuss the possibility in the future of us constructing a, what we're referring to as an agricultural expo facility that could be used by not only the county, but other organizations around the state. We believe it would be a well-used facility if we could have one in this region.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving the report, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report was in our package. If there's any questions on any of this, me and Mr. Glenn will do our very best to get them answered. Thank you. Now I'll make a motion.
All in favor of Mr. Lane to approve the planning commission report? Any questions about the planning commission report? Any none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Pass the minutes. Thank you.
The plan, Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report was in our package. If there's any questions on any of this, me and Mr. Glenn will do our very best to get them answered. Thank you. Now I'll make a motion.
All in favor of Mr. Lane to approve the planning commission report? Any questions about the planning commission report? Any none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the minutes. We'll move into our committee reports. Mr. Ruble is helping in the North Carolina, and Eastern Tennessee, where they had so much damage, and we're lucky to be here tonight, so Mr. Ross will go with him on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Building grounds?
Building grounds has nothing to report at this time.
Economic data, folks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We really have nothing to report, other than the fact of Wednesday at 2:00 o'clock, if you are in support of an agriculture expo center and you would like to attend the meeting, I think the more people that attend, the, so it's an invitation for you to be there if you can and want to. Thank you.
Education?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met September 23rd at the central office and toured the new healthcare facility they have there, and we elected officials. Carleen Brown's our chairman, Philip Stout's our vice chairman, and Chris Rippey's our new secretary.
Financial management, we just had a meeting tonight, and we've got some things up for bid. We've got the concrete and the drainage, that's the animal control center up for bids, so we'll be able to move that. That's all we have to report. We'll move on to health.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to get everybody's attention to look over the flyer, if there's any way you can make it out, either in the morning or toward the end of the day, Saturday, to either sponsor an animal, or bring an old car, truck, or motorcycle and donate to Animal Control. That's an opportunity for that. This is something we do every so often, the Adopt One, usually with the Adopt One, we have 100% adoption of all the animals that are sponsored, so it's a good opportunity to help clean some of the animals out, because our population stays around 80 to 90 right now. Thank you.
Billy Brady?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have nothing to report.
Policy personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The policy and personnel met last Monday on the 14th, and we had, we elected officers, myself as chairman, Steve Glenn, vice chairman, and Chris Rippey, the secretary, and we received a report from the judicial commissioners, and our codes officer wasn't able to be there, but he did send his report to me, and I sent it out to all the committees, and that was all we have at this time. Thank you.
Safety, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Safety hasn't issued a report at this time.
County professional partnership, Mr. Angleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today at the jail, there's 288 males, 222, and females, 66, and we have TDOC 15, and if you've got any questions, you'd be free to ask them, and I think the sheriff was here, he had to leave for a ballgame, but if you've got any questions, let us know.
If he's still here, give him a call. Anybody have any questions? All right, we'll move on to legislative committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We recently went, several commissioners did, to the TCA regional meeting on September the 26th. There were many things discussed, but the one that is most relevant to this body of government immediately is that the hours of continuing education did change. They added one more hour per year for a total of four years, so if you are a new commissioner or second-term commissioner, this applies to you, so be mindful of that in your CATE account. And we will be scheduling a meeting to get our elected officers set up soon.
Do we have anybody sign up for public comment? We'll move right on to new business. Mr. Gary Prater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Russell Lane, we want to add 1.10 feet to Russell Lane. We voted on this, and maybe wanted to go through the planning commission for confirmation on it, but Robert says it's okay if we approve this tonight. Thank you.
Put that before the motion? And that's miles, that's the right score. 1.10 miles. All right, I got a motion, I'll try it, second by Mr. Angleton, any question about this? All last word, call Ralph.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes.
Item number four passes 19, we'll move on to item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the recognition and appropriation of the funds to purchase the insurance for the fundraiser going on at Animal Control. The money was donated, and it has to be appropriated so we can spend it.
I think number seven's first.
Oh, sorry. My bad. I apologize. We've got too many pieces of paper up here. Oh, no, this is the sheriff one, sorry. That'll be next, so we can just save that for later. No, this is the appropriate, the state made a motion to award an additional round of training supplements for the sheriff's department, for ones who met a certain number of hours last year, and also, there was a $1,000 supplement for a single officer that came in prior to the rollover of the fiscal year. This is to appropriate those funds that have all been received at this time.
Motion by Mr. Dotson? Any questions about this appropriation? Any none, all last word, call Ralph.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes.
Item number six passes 19, we'll move on to item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the recognition and appropriation of funds donated for disaster recovery relief for East Tennessee and North Carolina.
Mr. Chairman, I need to make a motion to change that amount to $8,294.45. Oh, sorry. Well, then we'll do that. I'll make that motion.
Make that motion now. I've got a second actually, now, I'm ready for you. Now, go ahead.
Now, we'll change it to $8,294.45.
I think everybody's got that laying on your, so I have a motion, Mr. Ross, to amend that, and Mr. Wiltshire, second. All right, we're voting on the amendment first. You can change it. All right. Let's just move on. Thank you. We'll move on to the IDB, Mr. Anderson.
Evening, Chair and Commission. I believe you all should have our, I'm losing my voice, the activity and financial reports. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer those for y'all.
Motion to approve. And the second by Mr. Lane. Any questions for the IDB comments report?
Yes, sir. So I was going to mention a change. I'd send an agenda of an events, of things that were coming up on our calendar, as well as the communities. One of those, so Wednesday morning at 11:00 a.m., our TCAT McMimble will be having the
groundbreaking for their new, their new facility that will be going in, and then that afternoon at 2:00 p.m., Center Bowling and several others from state representatives, I believe, from tourism, economic development, and agriculture will be with us at TSU at the Research Center, 2:00 p.m., to discuss the possibility in the future of us constructing a, what we're referring to as an agricultural expo facility that could be used by not only the county, but other organizations around the state. We believe it would be a well-used facility if we could have one in this region.
Any other questions? All in favor of approving the report, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the minutes. The plan, Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The report was in our package. If there's any questions on any of this, me and Mr. Glenn will do our very best to get them answered. Thank you. Now I'll make a motion.
All in favor of Mr. Lane to approve the planning commission report? Any questions about the planning commission report? Any none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the minutes. Mr. James Williams, Judicial Commissioner?
Ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, you have my report in your packet. Be glad to answer any questions if you've got any.
All in favor of Mr. Savage? Second by Mr. Lane. Any questions about the judicial report? Any none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Pass the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Court, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them at this time.
All in favor of Mr. Taylor? The second by Mr. Hillis about the financial report? Anybody got any questions about the financial report? Any none, all in favor, approve in the financial report, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass the minutes. We'll move into our committee reports. Mr. Ruble is helping in the North Carolina, and Eastern Tennessee, where they had so much damage, and we're lucky to be here tonight, so Mr. Ross will go with him on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have nothing to report at this time.
Building grounds?
Building grounds has nothing to report at this time.
Economic data, folks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We really have nothing to report, other than the fact of Wednesday at 2:00 o'clock, if you are in support of an agriculture expo center and you would like to attend the meeting, I think the more people that attend, the, so it's an invitation for you to be there if you can and want to. Thank you.
Education?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met September 23rd at the central office and toured the new healthcare facility they have there, and we elected officials. Carleen Brown's our chairman, Philip Stout's our vice chairman, and Chris Rippey's our new secretary.
Financial management, we just had a meeting tonight, and we've got some things up for bid. We've got the concrete and the drainage, that's the animal control center up for bids, so we'll be able to move that. That's all we have to report. We'll move on to health.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to get everybody's attention to look over the flyer, if there's any way you can make it out, either in the morning or toward the end of the day, Saturday, to either sponsor an animal, or bring an old car, truck, or motorcycle and donate to Animal Control. That's an opportunity for that. This is something we do every so often, the Adopt One, usually with the Adopt One, we have 100% adoption of all the animals that are sponsored, so it's a good opportunity to help clean some of the animals out, because our population stays around 80 to 90 right now. Thank you.
Billy Brady?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we have nothing to report.
Policy personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The policy and personnel met last Monday on the 14th, and we had, we elected officers, myself as chairman, Steve Glenn, vice chairman, and Chris Rippey, the secretary, and we received a report from the judicial commissioners, and our codes officer wasn't able to be there, but he did send his report to me, and I sent it out to all the committees, and that was all we have at this time. Thank you.
Safety, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Safety hasn't issued a report at this time.
All right. County professional partnership, Mr. Angleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today at the jail, there's 288 males, 222, and females, 66, and we have TDOC 15, and if you've got any questions, you'd be free to ask them, and I think the sheriff was here, he had to leave for a ballgame, but if you've got any questions, let us know.
If he's still here, give him a call. Anybody have any questions? All right, we'll move on to legislative committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We recently went, several commissioners did, to the TCA regional meeting on September the 26th. There were many things discussed, but the one that is most relevant to this body of government immediately is that the hours of continuing education did change. They added one more hour per year for a total of four years, so if you are a new commissioner or second-term commissioner, this applies to you, so be mindful of that in your CATE account. And we will be scheduling a meeting to get our elected officers set up soon.
Do we have anybody sign up for public comment? We'll move right on to new business. Mr. Gary Prater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Russell Lane, we want to add 1.10 feet to Russell Lane. We voted on this, and maybe wanted to go through the planning commission for confirmation on it, but Robert says it's okay if we approve this tonight. Thank you.
Put that before the motion? And that's miles, that's the right score. 1.10 miles. All right, I got a motion, I'll try it, second by Mr. Angleton, any question about this? All last word, call Ralph.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Kristy Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? 19 yes.
Item number four passes 19, we'll move on to item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the recognition and appropriation of the funds to purchase the insurance for the fundraiser going on at Animal Control. The money was donated, and it has to be appropriated so we can spend it.
I think number seven's first.
Oh, sorry. My bad.
All right, we'll move on to less blame committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we recently went, several commissioners did, to the T C A regional meeting on September the twenty-sixth. There were many things discussed, but the one that is most relevant to this body of government immediately is that the hours of continuing education did change. Um, they added one more hour per year for a total of four years. So if you are a new commissioner or second-term commissioner, this, this applies to you. So be mindful of that in your K A D account. And we will be scheduling a meeting to get our, um, our elected officers set up soon.
Uh, do we have anybody sign up for public comment? You don't want to call anything out? We'll move right on to new business. Uh, Mr. Gary Prater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Russell Lane, we want to add one point ten, uh, feet to Russell Lane. We voted on this and, um, lady wanted to go through the planning commission for confirmation on it, but Robert says it's okay. We approve this tonight. Thank you.
Uh, and that's his miles, that's the, right. Or ten miles. All right, I got a motion, Mr. Prater. The second by Mr. Angleton. Any questions about this? All asked for, call up.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Nineteen yes.
All right, item number one, pass this to Anderson. We're down to item number two, I make a motion.
Mr. Chair.
We're left on the next one. The second by Mr. Savage. We have a motion, the second, all of the favor, Scott Reznikoff, say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes. Pass the unanimous. We will move on to item number three, elector Paul McHare. Got an announcement, Mr. Evans, the second by Mr. Bolden. All of the favor electing Michael Bell as Paul McHare, say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes. Pass the unanimous. We will turn item number four off to Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an amendment to the ambulance fund to appropriate, um, funding to purchase fifteen, uh, multi-protocol, multi-band handheld radios.
Motion to approve. You have a motion, Mr. Bell, the second by Mr. Moffett. Any question about this? This is for the packing system that the state's putting in, if they are capable of using them. Any more questions? All right, the last one, call up.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith? Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Nineteen yes.
All right, that's number four, passing that to zero. We'll move on to item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, the recognition and appropriation of the funds to purchase the insurance for the, um, fundraiser going on at Animal Control. Um, the money was donated, um, and has to be appropriated so we can spend it.
I think number seven's first.
Oh, sorry. My bad. I apologize. We've got too many pieces of paper up here. Oh, no, this is the sheriff one, sorry. That'll be next. So we can just save that for later. Uh, no, this is the appropriate, uh, the state made a motion to, um, award an additional round of training supplements for the sheriff, uh,'s department for ones who met a certain number of hours last year. And, uh, also, there was a thousand dollar supplement for a single officer who, that came in prior to the rollover of the fiscal year. This is to appropriate those funds that have all been received at this time.
You have a motion, Mr. Dotson? Second by Mr. Angleton. Any questions about this appropriation? Any none, all asked for, call up.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith? Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Nineteen yes.
That's the, that's the, we will down to number six.
Yep.
That's the donation down at the front.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could, I'd like to mention that's a million-dollar policy. We had to get a million-dollar policy just to have a cruise in over there. And so that just shows, you know, we got some support in the community that somebody jump up and help pay for that. Yeah, I make a motion.
You have a motion, the second by Mr. Angleton. To approve this amendment. Any questions about it? All asked for, call up.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Nineteen yes.
Uh, six passes, nineteen zero. We move on to item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the recognition and appropriation of funds donated for disaster recovery relief, uh, for East Tennessee and North Carolina.
Mr. Chairman, I need to, uh, make a motion to change that amount to eight thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-five cents. Oh, sorry. Well, then we'll do that. I'll make that motion. Now, we'll change it to eight thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-five cents.
I think everybody's got that line on your, your desk. So I have a motion, Mr. Ross, to amend that. And Mr. Wiltshire, second. All right, we're voting on the amendment first. We change it. I guess. I already, I tried. I have a question for you. Do we need, can we both vote the amendment to change?
Yes.
All right. All of the people to change, say aye. All right, now we're back on the original motion up there. And, uh, before we vote on this, uh, I did want to thank the public. This is kind of spearheaded by Mr. Scott Reznikoff and Gary Prater, uh, the disaster that happened in East Tennessee. They have, uh, bought water and things to get to them. And we've asked the public, we donate money and all this money will be going directly to the state. So that's why Mr. Reznikoff is now delivering some goods and helping those people up there. It's just an attraction in the community. We've really had some outpouring. We've got, um, a lot going on. So I'll ask the, call up.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl Bolden?
Yes.
Charles Dotson?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Steve Glenn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
James Hines?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Kenny Moffett?
Yes.
Cam Montgomery?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Christie Ross?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Donna Smith?
Yes.
Cole Taylor?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Anyone want to change your vote? Nineteen yes.
All right, we'll shut, pass it up, zero. We'll move right on to item number eight, approval of another.
This is a list for the notaries. Timothy D. Barnes, Darla L. De Leon, Emily King, Edgardo Javier Vasquez, Stacy Sanders, Chase McGee, John S. Morrison, Tammy Poston Ross, Jeff Smith, Sabrina Jennings, Julissa Myers, J. Denise Marsh, and Dale Stubblefield.
You have a motion, Mr. Dotson? The second by Mrs. Smith, to approve the notice. All those in favor of approving the notice, say aye.
Aye.
All of the votes. Pass the unanimous. We will move on now to the number eleven announcement. Under announcements, I overlook the name, uh, Ms. Lana Hillis and Stephen Hilton. And I think Mr. Moffett's been on there working and some of y'all of us has really been working on this moving closet. A lot of the senior center staff has spent a lot of time getting these clothes in trailer so they can get them up in East Tennessee where we're really devastated. And, uh, we just want to thank everybody that donated and put so much time in there.
Uh, and just to update everybody, uh, that trailer will be probably leaving on Thursday to go up there. Uh, and it's, uh, going to be in the hands of the T L C Center in Elizabethan. Uh, but they're actually, the plan is to actually get it in deeper. And they're going to manage that, uh, that trailer. And we showed them the video and they, they nearly went to tears. Uh, our first lady there, Ms. Bell, she, she used her phone to do it. And it's just, uh, the impact is going to be, um, very, I mean, you ain't going to be able to believe the impact. But we have hauled, um, three loads to Elizabeth, uh, semi-loads of stuff. Uh, two of those were from Walker. Uh, they, they trucked it up there and then I trucked another one up there. And then this weekend, we hauled a load to, uh, Liberty Hill Baptist Church over in Spruce Pines. Of course, those people are just, you know, eternally grateful for what we've done as a county. And it's really showed the support there. So we're thankful and, Ms. Lana, thank you for everything that you've done. I know it's been a lot of stress that I put on you and I apologize for that, but I think it's going to be worth it in the end.
Uh, anybody else, anyone else?
If I don't announce this, I'll get hurt by my wife. Uh, they're having a trunk train Saturday. It's going to be seventy-seven miles. It's going through, starting at the mall, going up through Van Buren County, going to White County, coming through DeKalb County, and Coffee County is going to join in too. So if anybody, it starts at nine-thirty, I believe, at the mall, it's going to wind up at the mall. So anybody is welcome to join.
Uh, one other thing, um, a dear friend, uh, teacher Russell Watson, uh, passed away and I just want to make mention. Uh, matter of fact, if, uh, if you had Russell as a teacher, I'm going to ask you to stand up uh, because he impacted, uh, many of us and just in this short, small room, you can see the impact that he had. He passed away at seventy-nine years of age, uh, last Wednesday. Uh, he taught in Warren County for over forty-four years. He was devoted to F F A in Warren County and it's been unmatched by any other. Um, we do plan to do a formal presentation honoring him in February during F F A week. If you want to be a part of that or want to help plan that, uh, please get with me. And we're going to work with the school board to try to figure out a good way to honor him. Uh, at this time, I'm going to ask everybody, if you would, do a moment of silence, uh, in honor of him and his family and just think about him. Thank you.
All right, I want to, if you finish your seat in this country land on your desk before you leave, make sure it's filled out. It's for your, um, membership to the R B A care. And we need to get them all back in right now. Then I'll turn it over to Mr. Cole Taylor. Yes, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not used to standing here on this side of the podium here. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, uh, I'm doing something that's a great honor for me to get to do. And it's, uh, I know it's going to be a great honor to this family, but, uh, tonight I'm going to do a proclamation in honor of Mr. James Houston Dickey Hillis Senior. Um, and if I could, I'd like to get his three kids, uh, Mr. Jim and Vic and Brad up here. And I'd also like to get Ms. Hillis up here, if that'd be all right. After I read this proclamation, I got a few other words I'd like to say, but I'm afraid I might not make it through the proclamation if I say them first. Uh, thank y'all for being here tonight, number one. And, uh, I'm going to read this. This is a proclamation in honor of James Houston Dickey Hillis Senior. Whereas James Houston, James Houston Dickey Hillis Senior, born a Warren County native on April seventeenth, nineteen thirty-nine, and graduated from City High School in the class of nineteen fifty-eight. And whereas he subsequently joined the United States Army and was assigned to the eleventh Airborne Division and stationed in Fort Carson, Colorado. And whereas he returned home to begin a career in law enforcement, where he served with the City of McMembel Police Department and Warren County Sheriff's Department. And whereas he had a distinguished forty-three-year career in the banking industry, which the first thirty-six years were with City Bank and Trust Company. And he helped countless numbers of Warren County citizens procure loans to start families, build businesses, and invest in the future of our community. And whereas he brought joy to numerous people far beyond those in our local community by delivering the soulful message of God through his song as a forty-two-year member of the Harmony Echoes Gospel Group. And whereas he served on the board of the West Warren Utility District for twenty years, the Joint Economic and Development Board for seventeen years, and the Board of Caney Fork Electric Co-op for thirty-one years. And therefore, on the behalf of the Warren County Executive, the legislative body of Warren County, Tennessee, and a truly grateful community, that for all the years of service to his country, state, and county, we officially declare October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, James Houston Dickey Hillis Day in the Warren County, Tennessee. To the Hillis family, I just would like to tell you on behalf of, and I think I can speak for just about all of Warren County that knew Mr. Hillis. Uh, I got to know him more on a personal level because he was not only a friend, but he was part of my family. And all of y'all are included in that. And I just want to tell you that, uh, Mr. Hillis, what people don't realize, people like him is what Warren County was built on. And that's one of, he's one of the reasons that Warren County's been such a wonderful place to be, to call home. And that's for all, a lot of younger people may not know who he was, but he was a true spirit. Uh, very, had a lot of pride and cared about his family. And I will say that y'all should be blessed because he left such a wonderful legacy behind to live on, for y'all to live out. And I'm so proud and honored to get to do this tonight because, uh... He meant the world to me and I know he meant the world to y'all. And he meant the world to Warren County. And we just wanted, this is just a small something token that we can do for such a great sacrifice that he done for us. And we appreciate y'all so much.
We currently lost a great community leader. Of course, I, I basically, we have another community leader, Mr. Ivey Hillis here tonight. We'll take him in, pick him around the block.
He, he's ninety-four. Ninety-four.
Did I hear a motion, William? Is there a motion, Mr. Evans, to say, hey, all the favors, say aye?
Aye.